Have mercy upon us in the midst of all the things that are going on around us. We know, Lord God, that the Word of God is the answer. And so we ask that you would just put your Word in our hearts so that we might live day by day believing and trusting and depending upon what you are able to do. We ask you and invite your presence here this morning and ask that you, Lord God, would govern our decision making and our behavior and that you would just let your anointing fall fresh upon this body and the people who are in attendance this morning. We ask in prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Good morning, everyone. Commissioners have documented their hand from Christie Thornton. I know you don't have it. I'm gonna ask our Public Information Officer Hannah Hawke to come and read this to you. So you have the information that we have. It's always important to know where we are with this COVID-19 and what's planned for vaccination.
This is from Director Thornton. She says, "I apologize in advance for my absence from today's county commission meeting. I have a very important meeting with Alabama Department of Public Health where we are planning to start a mass vaccination clinic for COVID-19. ADPH approved our closed point of disposition plan, but they want to use our plan as a public vaccination plan to coincide with the ADPH vaccination plan. We will be sending out an email this afternoon so that each of you will know locations and will be able to share with your constituents. I've worked all weekend with ADPH so that we can initiate this plan as soon as vaccine is available for mass vaccination. Montgomery County latest COVID-19 numbers, 17,424 confirmed COVID-19, 84,281 Montgomery citizens tested, 283 confirmed deaths from COVID-19. There have been 2,600 new COVID-19 cases for the month of January with an average of 144.4 cases per day."
Do you know Sheriff Thornton? You see that there?
Yes. You got it. I had a very few. I said, "Why?" Yeah, I said, "Why?"
Let me call me if I can.
Yeah.
I'm sure Christie Thornton can answer those questions later today.
I've been asked that also, so, yeah. 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 I'm with him. I'm with him. I'm with him. I am with him. Okay. I know, Doug, I don't know whether the rest of these officials know that John Harrison, Pike County, passed away last week with COVID. He was with us. He was with us.
I wasn't even aware of that myself, so.
Okay. Lawrence?
Our visitors for today will start with Judge J.C. Love, Sheriff Cunningham, followed by Mike Dunn, Managing Director with Stiefel, George Speak, our County Engineer, and Hannah Hawke, our Manager of Public Affairs. We can now go over the items to be considered on the agenda during our formal session. We will consider a bid award to Climate Service for preventive maintenance on HVAC for various county buildings. Consider a contract with ICS Solutions for inmate telephone and video visitation services for the detention center. Consider authorization of miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Does anyone have anything to add for their agencies? Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Are there any additions there? Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
We want to do it from that. We want to help.
Or Mercy House? Well, Dan had an alternative idea.
Yeah, I know what it is. Go on, say it, Dan.
M.A.P., it's the Ministry for...
About People.
About People, yes. We thought we'd like to make a $30,000 contribution to M.A.P. from the anticipated designated income that's coming in. I know, I don't think we have that much in it right now.
I believe according to the most recent sheet, we have $38,037.
Do we have $38,000? Let's do it from there. $30,000 contribution to help them with their... They had a $100,000 goal to get them started over there. BZ Allen gave them $30,000. We're as much a sponsor as BZ Allen is.
While we're on that 38, I had mentioned to you guys about a $2,500 donation for the MLK Breakfast. It's in our packet.
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, this this morning, right? Thank you, this morning.
So we can do that from that same pot, Lawrence?
And who is that?
I'm...
Alpha Phi Alpha.
Alpha Phi Alpha. It's in our pa... I emailed it and then it was placed in our packet.
We've done it before.
Is that the very...
Every year we got it.
I'm gonna find it.
I got all the things in my office, too.
Are there any others?
It's number six on the information session. No, that's the Kidney Foundation. I'm sorry, guys.
We'll get that information between sessions.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
I saw the email.
Okay. All right.
Next, we'll consider a budget change request, number one, for the Sheriff's Office. Consider position fill requests for the detention facility for corrections officer sergeant, a stores clerk, one, and two corrections officer trainees. Consider position fill requests for the engineering department for county road traffic control tech, one, a master auto mechanic position number... A master auto mechanic and a fuel transport operator. Consider position fill requests for the probate judge's office for a customer service clerk. Consider a position fill request for the sheriff's office for a deputy sheriff trainee. Consider a position fill request for the youth facility court for a juvenile probation officer. And consider travel training requests from detention, the sheriff, tax and audit, and the youth facility detention. Those are all the items on our agenda for the formal session. Our first visitor will be the probate judge or his chief clerk, Octavius, in his place? And this is consideration of a waive rule item.
Morning, Commissioners. Coming to you this morning asking for consideration for waiving the rules for the memorandum of understanding regarding the administration of the 2021 special Montgomery Municipal Election.
There was no document provided, but I assume that the city's gonna pay for everything, right?
That's correct, sir.
And this election will be held when?
March the 23rd.
Is today the last day to qualify?
The 19th, yes. Actually, it was yesterday.
Oh, qualify...
I'm sorry, today, today, I'm sorry. Day ahead. The 19th today, yes.
Are we good with that?
Thank you, sir.
Our next visitor is Sheriff Cunningham.
Good morning.
I had to yell it out.
Item number two is consider an alcohol license application for a special event for Latino festival.
Oh, I don't know. I guess they already talked to you, Doug, about that?
They hadn't. Not on this one, no.
I haven't seen that. Normally it comes to you all, anyway.
It normally comes through first to me, but I haven't heard from...
I hadn't.
It appears it's, just like the other ones, one special event, not a year long, just one, from what I was reading. That's what I understand, but I will...
That's y'all.
I'll touch, I'll make contact with Mr. Brown.
Okay.
And see if that's similar to what they've done in the past.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause it's just, it looks like it's gonna be February the 13th or 14th.
When we need to act on it. If there's no objections, then we can get it done. I agree.
I don't, I'm not objecting, you know?
That can go on the next agenda.
The next agenda, yeah.
But let's encourage them to continue to do the year block, whatever they were trying to get.
They were trying to get a year.
Long permit.
Yeah.
That's possible.
And then we have a general information item, number five, regarding repairs to the third and fourth floors of jail one.
Yes. I think, I know Commissioner Singleton went and I know Commissioner Harris been over. And when we first did first and second floor and the third floor, now we really need to address those issues over there as far as painting and replacing some of the day room tables and all the stuff that we did on the first and second floor. We need to address that on the fourth floor. Also, I know we've been having a lot of plumbing issues and so I know Florence had been talking with PH and J about trying to get all that taken care of. So I just at least bring it to your attention that we need to go ahead and move in that direction to at least try to get that third and fourth floor looking better.
How did we miss that on the first round?
Well, we didn't. It was added to the budget and we went back and, not we, you all went back and took the other two floors out as a cost-saving measure when you all were looking at it. So now we're just coming back saying, you know, we need to go ahead and add those other two floors back.
Can you have secure some extra funding from the state?
Oh, yeah. We've secured pretty decent funding from the state due to this COVID to be able to help pay for this. So it's just, I think now's the time for us to go ahead and move in that direction because by the time we get everything lined up and get everything to get the approval part going and get the contractors in there, we're still prolonging, we're still looking at six or seven months. But if we don't go ahead and get the balls turning, we're looking at a year, a year and a half.
Is this COVID funding continuous now?
No, it's stopped. Yes. December 30th.
COVID funding, what does that allow you to do in terms of renovations that you're talking about?
Oh, we can do anything. The money's already been paid to the county, so it's up to you all to enact the...
3.5 million is up to the right number?
Yeah, probably a little bit more.
Separate fundings from the other. Sheriff, so did PH and J do the initial... So do you have an estimate on the third and fourth floor, what the cost would be?
Yeah, I think Lamar has that where they took that, the third and fourth floor out of the original budget that you all had.
Right.
So he has that information.
What was that, Lamar?
Okay.
So then PH and J wouldn't have to do a deep dive. They would just have to refresh what they did a couple of years ago. And so that's your request today is to reengage.
I'm assuming that that's a good, that's still a good estimate?
Well, that's what PH and J is gonna tell us. They would come back in and use that information.
That's what we took out for the work that was in this work. So we're thinking it ought to be around at this time still.
Well, let's find out definitely what it is, but I agree we need to move forward while we're in that work.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we allow the sheriff to reengage, PH and J to evaluate the projects on the third and fourth floor.
Thank you.
Well, it's next week, right?
Two weeks. Yeah.
I think we'll have a contract next, at the next meeting and they'll start working on that.
Taking it out don't mean when they took it out that it's gonna be the same. We can do that again.
No, no, no. The 3.5 million somebody missed on COVID, that's money that we've spent. That's money that's reimbursed.
No, this is money that we got...
It's a difference altogether.
Yeah.
That we got for inmates.
This came from DOC's chair of COVID funding and it was an additional $28 a day per inmate that basically the state should have taken. Is that correct?
Well, basically, yes.
I see.
And it can be used for construction?
Yes. This is paid to the county. Just don't have restrictions. It's paid to the county so that the county can use the money. You know, this is money that you all earned.
And it's a completely different funding program than the five or six million that we had to turn receipts in.
That's correct.
Totally different.
Yeah, this already paid to you all, it's already in your bank.
Different strings attached, different deal.
Yes.
Just hope it doesn't come in four million.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a bid process, right?
Sir?
It would be bid at the construction?
Yes, sir. They all develop construction documents and as we said, that shouldn't take a deep dive because they've done this work once. We'll also look to see if there's any other things that should be considered at the same time while inmates are moved from those floors. And we'll come back to you with all those numbers. And then after construction documents are completed, it will be, go through the Public Works bid law.
All right. That's it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Next is Mike Dunn, Managing Director with Stiefel, to discuss some refunding options.
Good morning. Good to see you face to face. I'm here today just to briefly highlight the refunding opportunities that the county has. We've had discussions about this. I think this is a familiar subject to you. Your 2010 bonds totaling 4.8 million, 2012 bonds of about 8 million, and 2014 bonds of about 13 million. Total refunding around $26 million. Interest rates are very attractive. They hit historic low levels in August. They remain very attractive. They've gone up a little bit, but still remain very attractive. Conditions in the municipal market are very favorable. Cash flow coming into the market. Investors have money to invest and right now there's a limited supply of tax exempt bonds, so that bodes well for issuers. The refunding we're estimating would save about $1.8 million, which is over 7%. Considered an economic refunding in our business. The estimated interest rate, all in true interest costs, is about 118. That replaces interest rate on the refunding bonds of about 442. The savings, there are different ways you can take the savings. If you take them over time, it's about $210,000 a year through fiscal year 2029. Refunding structure is amortized over the same period as the refunded bonds. So that's the highlights. Glad to answer any questions that you have.
Mike, it does not extend any of our debt out any further either, right?
That's correct. We amortize over the same period as the bonds that we're refunding.
Mr. Chairman, I had a, was able to have a detailed conversation with Mr. Dunn and I am supportive of this path. I'm supportive that we do this per the recommendation that this is the good time to do it. This is the right time to do it.
And we would, as we've done with the county in the past, anytime we're working on a refunding, we would, if it's something you want to do, we would recommend that we get ready as quickly as possible. And we would come back to you and report current market conditions and estimated savings before we actually sold bonds and make sure that those savings levels are agreeable to the county commission. So this wouldn't be the first time I visited with you on it and you guys are familiar in the past. When markets change, we've come to you before and said, "Let's hold, let's wait until a better time." So we would, that's the way we would pursue it as we've done here, Sergeant.
What's the dollar amount of the debt we're talking about?
It's a little over $26 million of refunded bonds. Actually, the new issue would be a little bit less than that because we sell premium bonds. So the new issue is about 25 and a half million. So you actually would end up with a little bit less outstanding debt than you currently have.
Remind me, what was in this money, in these issues designated? What was it, like the 2012? What was that issue for?
I don't...
I didn't hear the question, Dan.
I'm concerned, what did we, the 2012 issue? You do recall what that was for?
The 2012 and 2014 issues are through the Public Building Authority. They were related to the jail project. This is just refunding outstanding...
And that 10?
Yeah, related to those various projects.
That won't, that's not an issue for me. But how about the 2010?
2010, general obligation debt. Let's see. I'm sorry, I do not know exactly what that debt was related to.
Not from the school.
No, I don't believe so.
Mr. Chairman, I did meet with Stiefel and I have reviewed this and I'm not a financial wizard by any means, but it did help me to understand the bond market and going forward. And this does appear to me to be a good time to do this, by the commission agrees.
So the request for today is just to get the paperwork in order. Today is not pulling the trigger. Today is getting our paperwork in order and then once that is done, you will tell us, you will give us the high sign when we need...
As we, as we work through the process, we'll come back and we'll report to you where the market is at the time before we were ready to sell bonds.
You'll be providing an illustration, you say, so that those of us who are not financial wizards can have a better understanding? Okay.
So the next step would be a resolution authorizing...
Authorizing us to proceed. We, as you guys know, Liberty Bank is our partner in these financings. You would need to determine who you wanted to use for bond counsel and we would pursue documentation, getting that done. We would reach back out to the rating agencies who has rated your debt very recently, so that should be a very efficient process.
So even with the bond counsel and all the other added expenses, it still would be financially feasible?
Oh, yeah. When we refer to the savings, we're, that's net of all costs, that's savings to the county, you know, after all expenses related to the deal.
Next, next we'll hear from George Speak.
I've got two position fills I wanted to discuss. One is our welder out at the shop. He retired last June and the position was vacant when we did the budget, so it wasn't carried, the position wasn't carried into this year's budget. And so we're asking y'all to approve that. And so similar scenario on our service manager out at the shop. He's, he basically supervises the mechanics and handles day-to-day operations and like a dead animal pickup and ordering parts and that kind of...
Sheriff, I'm reluctant to prove any unfunded position.
Sounds like, sounds like he's... This position, it was, it was also in last year's budget and then we had the, the service manager. Well, both of these, actually, both of these were in last year's budget.
See, it's, well, why is it listed as unbudgeted?
They were vacant when the, this year's budget was done and they weren't...
Weren't budgeted.
They weren't budgeted. They were left out.
So they're still unbudgeted?
Yes, sir. They're, 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 it basically be pick them up from last year and carry them over.
Well, the, the one has been vacant since 2017, the shop service manager, but the welder, that position was vacated May 2020 and that was in the midst of the county hiring freeze. So I assume that's why you put a pause on replacing that person.
That's right.
That's the one who's got unbudgeted.
They're both listed as unbudgeted. The one has been vacant since 2017, the shop service manager, but the welder has been vacant for less than a year.
Is there somebody that's gonna move up to that welder's job, George?
No, sir. It'd be outside, a new hire. Now, the service manager would be a promotional.
That's not the only welder you got over there, right? How many welding positions you have over there?
Just one welder. Would you say one welder?
One current welder.
Who's doing the welding now?
No, we don't, right now, we don't have, we don't have a welder, period, right now.
What are you doing for welding?
They just getting by the best they can, you know? They, some of them can, the rest of it we just send out. Some of them get kind of well, but they're not really qualified welders.
How long, how long this job's been open?
It was, it was, he retired June the 1st.
May 2020. The welder since May 2020 and it wasn't filled because the commission put on a hiring freeze or we asked the department heads not to make any sudden moves for a while until we knew the budget. Now, the shop service manager has been vacant since 2017.
You know, when we did the budget, the welder, had he retired a little bit later, that would have been in the budget. It just happened to become vacant and so that, all vacant positions came out, but the timing on that one, it would have been in there. The other one we took out because we did do the hiring freeze and it's been vacant since 2017.
Well, I see no reason to fill it now, but maybe, sounds like we might need the welder, but I mean, if we can find, if we can concede to do that, I'm, I'm reluctant to, your positions has been open for any length of time.
The service manager, Joe Wagner's been doing, he's a mechanic and like I say, he's
basically doing the work and not getting paid for it. What, excuse me? Now, now we could do that, but it'd just be a promotion for him. It'd be a promotional, but the cost is about $3,800 a year to promote, to promote the guy that's doing it into this service manager position. So we're not really gaining any people, we're just promoting them.
Sheriff, I, you know, I'm reluctant to give me either one of them, but if we're gonna give them one, give them the welder job. That's it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we do move the welder position forward to the next, the next agenda and meanwhile, we can look a little deeper into the shop service manager.
Yeah, would y'all be open to giving this guy like a step increase or something like that, being he's doing the work now? Yeah, we can do whatever y'all want to do now. If y'all don't want to fill it, we'll just leave it vacant. Okay. Okay, no, thank you.
Next we'll hear from Hannah Hawk.
Good morning, I do not have any events to give to you each, but I did want to say that this is the second meeting that we've had, that we've gone virtual. So, and it seems to be going smoothly. We do want to let you know that we are continuing to work with Facebook right now to try to make sure that all of that's going smoothly. So just a reminder, please speak into your microphone, and unfortunately, you do have to get rather close to make sure that they can hear exactly what you're saying. That's it, thank you. For the virtual, because you guys are doing a great job. That's the smoothly part that I'm talking about.
We're, we're not complaining, so that means it's going smooth.
Yes.
Hannah, Hannah, I missed the Saturday's presentation, the, Dr. Stewart, yeah, I missed that. Is there any chance of us getting the video?
I'm sure we can, we can get that video. I believe it's currently on WSFA.com.
I looked.
But I will also contact them and see if we can get that.
I searched the, maybe I don't know where to look.
Yeah, yes, I can do that, yes.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Hannah, is there a list of upcoming events, anything?
That's what I'm saying, I don't have anything.
Nothing at all.
I don't know of anything, no, sir.
Oh, man.
Hannah, Hannah, did you want to talk to them about when we?
When you vote, if you will, please go slowly and make sure that you continue to say motion and second, but make sure to also push the button and then vote to approve as well.
We're going to go real slow today.
Yes.
Florence, give us a little time.
Yeah, I'm going to try to be better too. And you'll remind our Facebook listeners too that when we recess.
Correct, when we recess, we are going to completely go off Facebook, but we will come back on when we start the formal session.
The only other item is item number six, information regarding the Alabama Kidney Foundation. They had sent in information requesting a sponsorship for the kidney walk.
We've done a very generous $10,000 a year. And. And, and we've done that for the past four, at least four years, maybe five.
I think, I think we started to do that.
Because of Giles.
Yeah, Commissioner Williams was, was associated with that project. Really, kidney disease in Montgomery County is, it's, it's an epidemic, really. I, I, it just, I don't know, I mean, I, I, I know at least two or three people that are on dialysis. And I think that any help that we can give one of these nonprofits that's supporting the people that have to go through that and get that kind of treatment, we should try to do. The $10,000 level, maybe we can do something about that, but I, it definitely deserves, it's an organization that I feel that, that needs our support, and one that we should be supporting because they do serve a large number of, of kids in Montgomery County.
Yeah, I'll agree that it is certainly a, a major health issue, and oftentimes it's associated with uncontrolled hypertension, uncontrolled diabetes. But also I'm concerned that the Kidney Foundation says that they provide transportation and that. I think we need more clarity on that because there have been some people who asked to be transported, but they didn't provide it in the manner that they had led us to believe. So we need a little bit more information on the transportation portion that they provide, please.
Ironically, both the chair and the, both the chair and the patient chair, both are from here in Montgomery this year.
Chair, chair.
Commissioners, I would say that we get the $10,000 in-house operation.
Let's, uh, to, why don't we have somebody come in and talk to us? I don't mean, I'm all for supporting them, but just to clarify what it is that they're doing and the, the, the level of support that they're giving to kidney patients in Montgomery County. Let's get it clear.
I'll reach out, they contacted me, so I'll reach back out and I'll invite them to attend the next meeting. So are we approving the funding, or are we, okay. All right, so I'll have them come.
I mean, we, we can just get it from them exactly what kind of assistance they're providing and what level.
So Florence, do I put the Kidney Foundation person in touch with who to schedule? You?
Me or Tammy's fine.
Okay.
Uh, that covers everything in our information session. Oh, I'm sorry, the, we, the alcohol license?
Blood drive. County blood drive.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I missed it with the alcohol license, yes. Item number three is to authorize two blood drives this year, as we've done in the past. Since we are not able to have them on site, what, what you all had approved last year was leave subject to approval by the department head for them to, for an employee to go contribute on site at either Life South or the Red Cross. So can that item go on the next agenda? And that's all we had.
We're going to take an 18-minute recess, come back at 2:05 of the formal session.